Good evening. Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off and silence all cell phones in the meeting. The meetings are televised on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. We will begin the meeting, call to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, first item on the agenda, we have a few proclamations. And if my voice gives out, I'll be coming from the other side. Did you want your water down there? No, good, okay. First one is Carrie Clark here with the Alliance Against Family Violence. Whereas one in every four women will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, with approximately 15 million children exposed to domestic violence every year. Whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leaves a mark on the family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, and the problem crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, whereas victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and the healing they need with access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, so that they can escape the cycle of abuse and domestic abusers who should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from the Alliance Against Family Violence hotline, which is 913-675-7217. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence. Whereas the United States President, Congress, and other agencies have expressed a commitment to eliminating domestic violence, we must dedicate ourselves to protect the vulnerable members of our society with local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Would you like to say a few words? Okay, you don't have to. You don't have to. Give me a little handshake. Thank you so much for all you do for the community. Next one, we have Military Retiree Appreciation Day. Norm Gretchen is here, I believe. Thank you, sir. Whereas military retirees have served our country faithfully in times of peace and war, and whereas military retirees have made significant sacrifices in defense of our freedom and liberty, and whereas a large number of military retirees and their families live, work, and play in the Leavenworth community, and whereas the Fort Leavenworth Garrison will conduct a retiree appreciation day on October 30, 2021. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby join the Fort Leavenworth Garrison in recognizing the contributions, sacrifices, and loyalty of military retirees in our community by proclaiming October 30, 2021, as Military Retiree Appreciation Day.
Mayor Bowder, members of the city commission, on behalf of all the military retirees, and there are at least several thousand of us in what they call the Greater Fort Leavenworth Ketchmon area, I really appreciate this honor today to be able to come and get this. Last year, we did not have a retiree appreciation day because of the COVID. This year, we're going to have a hybrid one. Most of it will be done virtually, however, they are going to give the flu shots and have a tent set up in the PX commissary ground to give things out to retirees. I hope a lot of them come, but we waited till the last minute kind of to make this decision, but we'll see what we can do in pushing the word out there. This is a great place to live. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be living here myself. My kids have graduated from Leavenworth High School, at least two of the three, and they've come back from military courses, and my wife and I have lived here ever since 1996. So we really enjoy it. You take good care of the retirees. We noticed especially during the COVID, most of us and retirees I talked to on almost a daily basis felt very safe, health-wise at least, in terms of what is being done around the city. And certainly, as we look around the city now at all the improvements being made, in particular to the roads, we are very grateful for that. People talk quite a bit about the roads and the infrastructure improvements at the city and bringing in new businesses. So we're very pleased to be living here. We're thankful that this year we were able to do the hybrid. We're hoping that next year, we get back to the full MONI, as they call it, and run it in on the fort as a face-to-face event, and we'll just continue to kick that can down the road. For those of you running in elections, the incumbents, best of luck to you. Thank you very much once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. World Food Day. Farmer's Market. Are you the chair of the Farmer's Market?
President.
President. Whereas Food Day, October 16, 2021, connects us to real food, which is local, healthy, and sustainable, and challenges members of the community to eat real, whether it's one ingredient, one meal, all day or every day. And whereas World Food Day, October 16, 2021, educates and inspires the greater Kansas City community to create a stronger, healthier, more accessible, more sustainable food system. And whereas the health and well-being of our citizens is a primary concern for the City of Leavenworth, reducing obesity and diet-related diseases by promoting safe and healthy diets is a critical factor in improving our citizens' overall health. And whereas supporting sustainable family farms and local agriculture benefits a local economy. And whereas obtaining fair pay and safe conditions for food and farm workers is beneficial for both the producer and the consumer, so the food we produce and consume is safe and fair for all. And whereas expanding access to real food to those who live in food deserts is critical to alleviating hunger. Curbing junk food marketing aimed at children is vitally important in order to combat rising obesity rates and raise a generation of healthy children. Whereas the Leavenworth Farmer's Market has adopted the Double Up Program to provide for healthful eating for members of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program by matching their purchases of fresh produce up to $25. Whereas protecting the health of the environment and farm animals is necessary to sustain future generations. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim October 16, 2021, to be World Food Day. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored that when you all think of National Food Day, that you think of us. Market's had a fantastic year. We still have a few weeks left, every Saturday, 8:00 a.m. noon. During the ongoing pandemic, we have noticed a massive increase in customer turnout as more and more people focus more and more on their personal health. And providing and eating fresh local food is about as best as you can do on that. And as the president of the market, very happy and proud of my vendors and farmers. We bring it in every Saturday by the truckload. So come on out. We still have a couple more weeks. You know, additionally, we have pumpkins and all the fall decorations you need. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Is there still sweet corn left?
That's what everyone's talking about. Last week might be the last.
That's right.
Not positive, but most likely.
I think it lasted quite a long time this year. This is for the Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter of the NSDAR in the City of Leavenworth. Are you Pamela Sars? Okay. Whereas October 23, 2021, is the 115th anniversary of the founding of the Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of American Revolution, a women's service organization that honors the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence and whose objectives are to promote education, historic preservation, and patriotism. And whereas Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter, NSDAR, was founded on October 23, 1906, in Leavenworth, Kansas, by Ruth Emma Johns, with a charter membership of 15, to complete this important service work on the local level. And whereas now 132 Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter's daughters continue this fine tradition with more than 1 million women who have served in this vibrant service organization. And whereas Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter Daughters, I'm sorry, I'm tripping over that, Daughters have provided over 11,000 hours of service to the Leavenworth community over the past three years, awarded Good Citizen Medals to graduating high school seniors, promoted literacy, and given recognition awards, continued the decades-long tradition of awarding JROTC medals, provided scholarship funds to students for VOTEC training, supported service members, their families, and veterans. And whereas Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter proudly claims many members who were elected to serve at senior levels within the state, three of whom would lead the state, and one who presently serves as executive officer of the National Society. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim the entire month of October as a celebration of the Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter of the NSDAR in the City of Leavenworth, Kansas.
Well, happy birthday to the DAR, and thank you all so much for allowing me to allowing me to invite you all to be at our birthday party today. DAR appreciates all that you allow us to do to make our community better. As you heard, all the number of hours that we add back to you all by, we've cleaned one of the cemeteries, the headstones. We have worked on cleanup day. We have gone and put up a DAR marker for the fort and other places. So we are not a selfish organization by any means. We help you, and you help us. That's what DAR is about. So thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is new employee welcome. I'll just read off our new employees who have started within the last three to six months. First one is Clayton Frimmer. Clayton was hired on March 18, 2021, as a Park Tech One. Brandon Cole was hired on June 10, 2021, as a Streets Equipment Operator One. Nicole Shiflett was hired on July 8, 2021, as Administrative Clerk in the Streets Department. Julie McKeel was hired on July 20, 22, 2021, as a part-time clerk typist. Victor Ramos was hired on July 22, 2021, as a police officer. Laura Finney was hired on July 22, 2021, as a solid waste collector. Charlie Phillips was hired on August 5, 2021, as a telecommunications specialist. Kyle Anderson was hired on September 9, 2021, as a firefighter. Patrick Bradley was hired on September 9, 2021, as a firefighter. Ian MacArthur was hired on September 9, 2021, as a firefighter. Kayla Land was hired on September 9, 2021, as a police officer. Penny Haller was hired on September 16, 2021, as Assistant City Manager. Austin Flint was hired on September 23, 2021, as a solid waste laborer. Welcome, all new employees. Next item on the agenda, old business consideration of previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions or additions to the previous minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve minutes from September 28, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, new business, we have public comment. These are items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing. Public hearing, unsafe and dangerous structure, 2201 Magnolia Drive, damaged by fire. We need a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Public hearing is open.
Madam Mayor, this item will be handled by both Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works, and Hal Burdette, the Chief Building Inspector.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As we know, the item before us tonight is a structure that was damaged by fire back in July. The city received some insurance proceeds because the amount of the fire damage. The contractor is here. I don't, I'm not sure if the owner is here. Oh, thank you. Permit has been issued. Work has begun. I have been inside the building. They have gutted it. They're about ready to, you know, continue work. They're having some issues with getting products and materials because of the world we're in right now. But talking to Drew from ServePro, they believe that in the 90 days, we can have the exterior repaired and the interior ready for sheetrock.
Okay.
So we're recommending 90 days at this point.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Any comments from the owners? Any questions of the owner? Okay.
Was anyone injured in the fire?
Only a pet. We lost a pet.
Sorry, sorry to hear that. Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this recommendation? If not, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We need to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now consider Resolution B 2298.
I move to approve Resolution.
Do we have any questions?
B 2298, giving the owner 90 days to complete the repairs.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 All right, five to zero. Thank you. 90 days. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. Next item on the agenda, general items. Mayor's Appointment. I move to reappoint the following members to the Community Corrections Advisory Board with terms ending October 16, 2023. Patrick Kitchens, Jonathan Farrell, Marcia Jackson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Thank you. Next item, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider renewal of waste management contract for 2022 services.
This will be Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider approval of the 2022 Refuge Disposal Contract with Waste Management. The City of Leavenworth has operated solid waste collection and disposal service since at least the 1950s. The city currently disposes of roughly 11,500 tons of municipal solid waste each year, along with 3,700 tons of special waste, which is defined as sludge and grit from our wastewater treatment plant. Since closing our landfill in the early 90s, the city has taken our waste to several locations, including the HAMs facility in Douglas County and the Leavenworth County Transfer Station. Since January of 2019, we have been using Waste Management's landfill in Shawnee. The rates for 2021 for both solid waste and special waste were set by Waste Management at $25.96 per ton. In 2022, the cost for solid waste is increasing roughly 5% to $27.28 per ton. However, the cost for special waste is increasing by roughly 81% to $46.98 per ton. This increase in price will cost the city approximately $78,000 additional dollars per year. While many special waste generators are experiencing issues with disposal, part of the reason for the large increase in 2022 is that we haul more trash to the Leavenworth County Transfer Station due to severe shortages of staff during the spring and summer months. Basically, it helped our turnaround time in picking up trash. Waste Management was anticipating the city hauling more solid waste to their facility, and the reduction impacted their ability to maintain a stable landfill. Waste Management does identify specific special waste that carry potential risk, and wastewater sludge exhibit that risk. As we reduced our trash haul to their landfill, but did not decrease the amount of sludge, the landfill saw increased costs to maintain their structural stability. Moving forward, there are other options for solid waste disposal that can be considered over the long run. These include, but are not limited to, sludge-reed basins and land application. Staff will work with our consultant to evaluate the various options to identify the most cost-effective and sustainable long-term solution. This process will take time, and we will need to continue disposing of our sludge in landfills for several years. Staff does recommend the city commission approve the contract for landfill services with Waste Management for 2022 in the amount of $27.28 per ton for solid waste and $46.98 per ton for special waste, which is defined as sludge and grit.
Okay, so this is for one year, and you're also looking at other options over a longer term, correct?
For the special waste.
For the special waste, because that's what's so expensive.
Right. Yeah, dealing with the sludge and grit from the wastewater treatment plant is much more difficult to get stable prices, but it also does have a few more options, as Mr. Faust mentioned, some land application and some other things.
Good, good. Let's look into that. That sounds wonderful. I mean, a lot better, a lot better.
Yeah.
Option. Okay. Any other questions?
Do we have an option with the, because the special waste, the sludge, the price on that is really what's gone up, right? Since last year. Any other, I mean, were there any other options outside the Waste Management in terms of?
Both Tim and I contacted HAMs in Douglas County, because in the past, they've taken our waste. They were non-responsive.
Okay.
Mr. Faust, we're paying $27.28, or will pay $27.28 a ton to haul it down to Waste Management. If we use the transfer station, our county transfer station, how much was a ton there? What was their bid?
It was $50 this year. In 2022, it goes to $52.
$52 a ton versus $27 a ton. So when you factor in all the windshield time, driving back and forth, we're still, it's still better for the taxpayers for us to take it to Waste Management.
Correct. Actually, we did calculations based on our time, mileage, gas. We save this year, in 2022, we project to save $197 per load by going to the transfers, or Waste Management versus the transfer station.
That's big.
Significantly.
That's big, yeah. Well worth it. Thank you. Thanks for doing the evaluation.
Yeah, Mr. Faust, I have one other question. And you explained it in here in terms of, and I understand exactly why, because of the staff shortages, we took some of the solid waste to the transfer station as opposed to Waste Management. But because of that, we didn't, you know, meet what Waste Management thought we were going to bring in in terms of solid waste, but that's affecting our, kind of the rate we're paying for the special waste?
Correct.
Okay. How's that work? I mean, just in terms of, how are they looking at it? What's their mindset?
They're looking at, they have a maximum of a 10% ratio. They need basically, you know, 90 loads of solid waste versus 10 loads of sludge to maintain that stable landfill. We were significantly less than that this year, so.
So they wouldn't, they didn't, I mean, they raised the solid waste a little bit, but not a lot, but really, the big raise occurred with the special waste.
Right. Partly because they, you know, while we started hauling back to Waste Management, and we're doing that now, you know, they can guarantee that we were going to do that for 2022. And they thought maybe we'd be in the same situation as we were in 2021.
Okay, well, I think it's good that we're looking into options for the special waste for future years, because that's a pretty big price increase.
One other question, Mr. Faust. I know earlier this year, there were some issues, staffing issues, in refuse collection. That seems, I think I'm hearing that it's, has gotten better. You've taken some steps within that department, and it's kind of calmed, I don't want to say calmed down, but it's more predictable now.
Yeah, the situation's significantly improved. I think we're currently short one, but we've had some good applicants, and we have a number of good employees, so.
What else have you done to hold some, or get, hold some employees or get new employees? What has changed?
Actually, there was a slight increase in wage for the employees, which they very much appreciate, so.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, this one, yes, this one requires a motion, so entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the contract for landfill services with Waste Management for 2022 in the amount of $27.28 a ton for municipal solid waste and $46.98 a ton for special waste, sludge.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, first consideration ordinance, uniform complaints and notice to appear follow municipal call.
So we are Police Chief Pat Kitchens and our City Prosecutor Catalina Thompson.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, the Police Department and our Municipal Prosecutor, Ms. Thompson, are here this evening to ask you to consider a charter ordinance. Our Municipal Prosecutor, in her first four or five months here, has been doing a thorough review of all of the things that we've been doing for many, many years and discovered there is a technical error that exists in the way that we issue uniform complaint and notices to appear by our animal control staff when they're out in the field. And so the way to correct that is to address that with a charter ordinance. I'll turn it over to her in just a second for some more context about that. But specifically, we are asking for you to place a charter ordinance on first consideration that specifically identifies animal control officers as having the authority to issue a uniform notice to appear for violations. It's important for me to tell you that what we're talking about has no bearing on innocence or guilt of whether the person on the violation. It is simply making a correction to the mechanism that we notice, tell someone there's a violation, and have them come to court and have them litigated. I just, that's important to be clear. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Thompson for a little more context, and we can answer whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate you having me out here this evening. We're just really asking for you to go ahead and enact this charter ordinance to give our animal control officers another layer of protection and authority to issue these uniform complaints and notices to appear. Judicially, it would be much more efficient if they can do this in the field, continue to do this in the field. It gives them the authority to do so. Quite often, we have these situations where you've got the animal running at large. They find the animal, they find the owner, they're able to issue the citation right there and get that matter moving quickly. It will so if a person is perhaps injured and the animal has to be taken to the kennel. It gets the process moving a lot quicker so that they're not raking up kennel fees and such. So we feel that this would be a good layer of protection and authority for it. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, so we see this as a need to need to do this. Apparently.
Yes.
I'm trying to think here, I mean, has this been, what has the issue been? What has the issue been?
The issue has been, that's the way we have been doing it. My guess is what happened probably 40 years ago, the procedure changed without the appropriate technical change to the language of the ordinance to authorize that.
Okay, got it.
That's sort of lining the stars, correcting the technical, making sure everything's lined up, is my best guess about how we ended up here tonight.
And if we don't do this, they'd have to do a long-form complaint. They'd have to go out and do additional service. It lengthens the process. This keeps it very quick and moving through the municipal board.
Any other questions on this, or concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion. If not, I would entertain a motion. I'm sorry, it's a consensus. Is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right. We have a consensus. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Good to see you too. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda. Is the consent agenda.
All right. 7:30.
Yep, we're ready for you.
I move to approve the claims for September the 25th, 2021 through October the 8th, 2021 in the amount of $1,865,520.15. Net amount for payroll, number 20, effective October the 8th, 2021, in the amount of $348,137.60. No police and fire pension.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 All right. That concludes everything on our regular agenda here. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Seven items, okay. Um, going around the table, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I have a couple of things for the good of the order. Uh, just a couple of updates on some upcoming events. Uh, October 23rd, the city will hold our trunk retreat event out at Sportsfield Park. That starts at 5 o'clock. Uh, last year, we had more than 600 children go through that event. Uh, we're expanding it a little bit this year. Uh, the Police Department is doing a haunted house in the outfield of Sportsfield One, uh, which we're all looking forward to. And, um, we have increased the number of vendors, uh, up to about 40, I believe. And so, uh, really excited about that event, uh, out of Sportsfield on the 23rd.
How late does that go? Five to what?
Um, no, it starts at 5:00.
Five to 8:00?
Five to 8:00 or five to, how late?
Seven to seven.
Five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
When is the haunted house? I'm sorry.
The same time.
Five to seven.
Uh, we still, we're a full go for the Veterans Day Parade. Um, I know Fort Leavenworth, uh, will be participating, um.
Good.
At some level, uh, the city will be participating normally how we do with our city vehicles, fire trucks and et cetera. Uh, so we just hope for good weather that day. And then it's a little bit off, well, just about a month off now, but on the 19th, we will hold the, um, Holiday Lighted Parade and Merrish Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony as we have in years past, so really excited to have that full event back, um, on the 19th. Uh, one other, uh, thing, uh, we had a nice comment, uh, during the fire damaged, uh, item about our fire department. Uh, this past weekend, I participated, uh, with some of our commissioners in the, um, Fire Department's push-in ceremony for the aerial ladder truck. A couple of comments on the aerial ladder truck. It's the most expensive, uh, piece of equipment and, uh, single piece of equipment in the city. And, and here's what it's used for. The city has an ISO rating of two. That's an insurance rating. There are less than 100 cities in the nation with an ISO rating of one. So ISO of two is pretty much the highest level that a municipality, uh, can get. That helps with homeowners' insurance rates. Um, the City of Leavenworth has two high-rise, um, apartment, Cody Plaza and Planters Two. We also have now five new hotels. We also have Hallmark Card, CeeLo Ingredient. These are all buildings, um, that would require the use of an aerial if there was a tragedy related to some sort of a fire at one of those facilities. Our previous aerial truck, um, was 30 years old. We've been planning for the purchase of this piece of equipment, uh, for about 10 years. Um, it will be stationed at, uh, Fire Station Number Two. A lot of that is determined by, um, with help from the ISO Rating Group. So when they come out to evaluate the city, they do coverage circles, and their coverage circles include the percentage of buildings, um, that would be most impacted by the aerial, and so they help you set your fleet. So the trucks and how they're stationed across the city. Couple of other points. We provide mutual aid to Fort Leavenworth and the VA Medical Center. I think it's incumbent upon us as good partners to have, uh, the best firefighting equipment, not only for our partners and our residents, but also our firefighters. Um, and our chief, uh, Gary Birch, our current chief, has done a lot of work in standardizing and modernizing our fire department's, uh, fleet. And so I think this is, um, a really important addition to the City of Leavenworth for the safety of, um, our citizens and, uh, also for our firefighters, to have the best equipment possible for a full-time firefighting, uh, operation. So just a couple of comments about that.
Would you mention the, uh, trash bag delivery too, please? For the public?
I don't know what time it starts, so, um, do you know, Camilla, what time that starts?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
So we'll do, uh, the Lions Club? We'll do the.
And some of them will be going out on Friday, the day before.
Okay. The tra, trash bag delivery, it, it was again, as we've heard tonight and we've heard every week, there's delays on everything right now. Um, so we, we face the same thing with trash bags, but November 20th is the date right now for trash bag delivery. We still have trash bags at City Hall. We've had quite the run on them, uh, recently.
I wondered, yeah.
But we have, we still have, we still have plenty of trash bags, so, um, it's not any safe place where you need to hoard them or anything. So, uh, if you need them, come down and pick them up, but otherwise, uh, on the 20th, we'll deliver them.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you. Is that it, sir?
That is all.
Okay. Chief, you're still sitting here. Would you, you have anything you'd like to? He's got that intimidation factor going there. Mr. Prisinger.
Remind everyone that voting starts tomorrow. Anyone that wants to early vote, uh, starting tomorrow through November 1st, can go to the courthouse at 4th Mall, and they'll just walk in and present your ID in, in the clerk's office, and you can vote early. Otherwise, you vote on your regular, uh, polling place on November 2nd. Talking about trash bags, uh, but I'd just like to make a comment about trash in, along the streets. I just invite anyone to walk 20th Street, walk LaComner, 4th Street. It, it's just unfathomable to me that people throw their McDonald's bag or Hardee's bag or whatever out the window, their drink cups. It's, uh, in this day and age, I just don't understand it. Please, you know, any of you who are watching, just carry it with you till you get home, to your, your job site, whatever, and put it in the trash. Throwing it on the street is, just is unacceptable. And we do have a littering ordinance, but obviously you have to be caught in the act, so, uh, that's tough to do, but I wish people take a bit more pride in, in themselves as well as our city. And, uh, a quick question for Mr. Faust, since he's here. Any quick updates on, on the roads? There's been a lot of roadwork, and I see him out striping and fixing potholes and, uh, don't want to put you on the spot, but, but I'm going to.
Uh, actually, all the road projects are going quite well. Our pavement management program for 2021 is, is pretty much complete except for the striping and manhole adjustments that you'll see around town. Eisenhower Road, uh, with the county is, is progressing. They still plan to have it open, um, sometime mid-November. They clean up and punch this dive, that'll be probably done around the end of December, but it should be open in, in mid-November. Uh, the intersection at, uh, Fourth and Eisenhower, um, is still, uh, one lane south is closed.
No, it's open now. It's open this afternoon. Uh, Fourth and Eisenhower? Oh, I'm talking east and west. Yeah, going east. It was down to one lane, but now.
Correct. Southbound has still got the right lane.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
But it's going good. Ken's guys is completing their work.